Okay, I call to adjourn the April 29th, 2025 meeting of the High Point Regional High School Board of Education in Stanford Flashing. Flashing is...
This is why, in my name, St. America, and history public for just stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open Public Meetings Act statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law is enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Augusta, Branchville, and Sussex post offices, and notice sent to the New Jersey Herald, the Sunday Herald, and the clerk of the boroughs of Branchville and Sussex, and townships of Frankfurt, Lafayette, and Wantage. Mission statement: High Point Regional High School, in partnership with staff, family, and community, is dedicated to the quest for individual excellence. By fostering high standards of achievement, we prepare students to become responsible and productive members of a diverse society. We'll wait a second for roll call, but we can get this...
Oh, this is Mr. Dunn.
Present.
This is Diaz.
Present.
This is Call.
Present.
This is Longberg.
Present.
Um, this is Orsini, he's not here. This is Palisa.
Here.
This is Shunin.
Here.
Mr. Vanstone.
Here.
This is Wise.
Here.
Dr. Ripley.
Here.
And there we go. A motion will now be made that High Point Regional High School Board of Education enter executive session to provide an update on legal personnel and negotiation items, which are exempt from public participation pursuant to New Jersey public law nineteen seventy five, Chapter two thirty one, Oakland Public Meetings Act. Any discussions held by the Board which need not remain confidential will be made public when appropriate. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. The Board will reconvene in public session, in person and virtually, at the conclusion of the executive session. It is not anticipated that any action will be taken. Uh, I'll make that motion, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
May I have a motion to return to public session? In a second. Full in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are back in public session. Moving on to our agenda items, approval of minutes from the regular meeting minutes of March seventeen twenty twenty five and executive session minutes of March seventeen twenty twenty five. I will make the motion to accept those. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments, corrections?
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Shunin?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Palseth?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
That brings us to our first public comments on agenda items only. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, we'll open to public comments for agenda items only at this time. Each speaker should state his or her name and address. You will have three minutes to address the board, which will be timed by myself. We will limit this section to no longer than forty-five minutes. Please be respectful and mindful that your comments are being recorded. And as usual, we have two means to address the board, one in person and the other to our posted email address on our virtual classroom forum. Anything there? No comments from anyone in the room? I have a motion to close public comments.
Motion.
In a second.
Second.
Full in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay, great. That brings us to presentations. First up, Dr. Rick.
Good evening, gentlemen.
How are you?
Thanks for being here. Good evening, everyone. Presentation of the budget is not always the most scintillating experience. Try to make it that way, but sometimes it's good, sometimes it's ill. See how it goes this evening. But as you are aware, the state of New Jersey several years ago, about eight years ago, changed the manner in which they fund education in certain regions in the state and suffered state aid cuts. Ours approximately two point seven five million dollars over that period of time. And it has caused some hardships to many districts in the county in particular, except for one. One has experienced about over, I think, eleven million dollar increase. Quite shocking, actually. One thing with education is that if you're going to utilize more money each year, you have to have a long-term plan. If you load up the brakes truck and just dump money into a school at the beginning of the year, if there's no planning for that school, you might as well just burn it for fuel. Because you can only turf so many fields. You can only buy so many Chromebooks. Unless you have a systematic plan to utilize that money so that the trickle-down effect impacts student outcomes, it really is an inefficient system. Nevertheless, that's the system in which we've been working for the last eight years, and it has harmed our local community. Thankfully, we kind of planned, the board, and we have implemented a plan over the last eight years that has effectively given us a nice parachute with that two point eight million dollars of deductions. And there's been a number of reasons that we've been able to do that. We do know that some of our neighbors have had a more difficult time accepting and dealing with those state aid cuts. And we were one of two districts in the county that once again suffered state aid cuts this particular year. The other school was, I believe, still war. Everyone else got more money. And the reason for that is all speculation because the state will not release their what's referred to as S-two, the funding formula. In spite of the fact that it's been overrid by many districts around the state, they have not released it. If they did, I'm not quite sure that anyone would understand it anymore. I'm sure somebody... Nevertheless. So we find ourselves, I lost my train of thought, that happens. So let's start talking about the budget that we are presenting here this evening. All right, this is typical of what needs to be said, what the budget is funding, right? Effectively, what we want to do is provide our kids with a world-class life, education, social, emotional, athletic experience. We want to, as I say this to people all the time, anytime I get to speak publicly, our job is to inspire kids to love learning and inspire kids to love themselves. And if we can provide them with the resources to do that, and if we inspire them to do so, or incline them to do so, or encourage them to do so, we've done our jobs. But we must fund that to the greatest extent that our community is able to bear. And I think that that's something that we have demonstrated over the last fifteen years. At twelve, I can't speak for before because I really didn't understand it before when I was sitting here directing a curriculum. I presumed much to do little. So hopefully that's the opposite now. Anyway, so you can read that, see what it supports specifically. Now, here it's a breakdown of the expenses. Every year, we look, we're basically about seventy percent fixed costs of salaries and benefits. You'll see that this charge adds sixty-nine percent instead. Is there a pointer on this screen thing? They don't do that anymore, do they?
No. It's green now.
Do this with a dog at home. It's entertaining to my kids. So we got, what is that, sixty-nine percent. Last year, I think it was seventy percent. We're typically anywhere from sixty-eight to seventy-two percent, generally sixty-nine or seventy. But the reason I bring this up is this pie chart leaves very little discretionary income by which to cut two point seven million dollars. You don't have two point seven million dollars worth of clay. You don't have two point seven million dollars worth of wood. You don't have two point seven million dollars worth of Brunson burgers. So these are discretionary spending. And what I want to point out is things like transportation, special education tuition, vocational school tuition are non-discretionary that are going up exponentially. The transportation costs at High Point are not low. We are the largest city district, the largest geographic region in the state. Kid Itini once presumed to have that. Today, it's been substantially corrected. So we have the largest area in the state that we drive kids around, which requires we have buses that can handle that. Requires that we spend for purchased services to multiple transportation companies to be able to manage this significant expenditure. And the transportation costs are skyrocketing year over year. Now, this is non-discretionary. There was once a year when they were trying to cut the budget and people talked about getting rid of courtesy busing. You know what courtesy busing is? The law says that anyone who lives within two miles can walk. Could you imagine if we told everybody who lived within two miles, "Sorry, your kid has to walk. We're not providing a bus anymore." Forget it. They would storm the breach and it would be car and feather because the roads around here are not equipped to provide for the safety of children to walk on them, particularly in the winter. It's absurd. And yet there was people who were discussing, "Let's get rid of courtesy busing." We won't discuss that here, at least not while I'm here. But nevertheless, these are costs that we don't necessarily think about that, like special tuition. There's a law that stipulates that an out-of-district tuition private school has the ability to backtrack two years and charge the district in September of the subsequent year from two years ago and say, "You know what? We got audited and we only charged you a hundred and twelve thousand. It cost us a hundred and seventy-two thousand to educate your kid. You owe us sixty thousand. We don't get two years to pay that sixty grand. We get maybe two months, if." And so this happens every year, and if it's a significant amount, which was this year, over three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, it presents a hardship. I'm just giving you context of what happened with the school budget and vocational school tuition. I love tech, always thought it was a great opportunity for our kids. In no way is this a castigation upon what they provide, but we paid up twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars for every student who chooses to go to Sussex Tech. Now, it's in our best interest to provide the best opportunity for those kids so that they see High Point as their stepping stone to being successful in life. So it's up to us to provide a product that draws them in such that the number of students who choose tech are reduced year over year. We've seen that. We were at a high of about two hundred and twenty-two students several years ago. We're down to one hundred and fifty students last year where this year choosing to go to tech. Now, again, that's not anything against tech, but it is a cost that puts a hardship on our community. All right. So really what we're talking about is how you cut two point eight million dollars, Scott. Well, we're cutting supplies, materials, and texts. And we're cutting purchase services. What is that? Well, when you need to plow the driveways, that's a purchase service. All right, we need to provide OTPT for various kids, that's a purchase service. We need to send kids out evaluations, those are purchase services. So really, where's the meat of what the cuts are? We've had to be strategic in salaries and benefits. But this number here is going up as well. I don't know if everybody's aware that benefits cost a little more now? Health benefits? Yeah, it's... All right. All right, budget appropriations, general fund eleven and twelve. This is the proposal based on what it was last year. So our overall budget is increasing by one point five seven percent, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And you say, "Well, that's considerable, Sean." I understand, but we have to... I'll get the tax levy in a minute. But our health care benefits increased by two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars this year. Eighty percent of the tax levy would be, which is two percent, will be taken out by health benefits, just to give you context. All right, so as a matter of fact, the state average, ours went up eleven percent this year, which, hey, that's Which, hey, that's high. And this higher than we've had in recent years, 11% is higher than we've seen recently. A few years ago, I think it was 4%. Wow, that was pretty good. We joined something called the SHI, the School Health Insurance Fund, several years ago, that what it does is it puts us in a group. Who's beating me? I'm easily confused. Sorry. I lose my train of thought. I don't think I can teach today because the phone is kind of in the middle of teaching. The kids' phone. I wasn't trying to.
No, I didn't look at it.
So, oh, yeah, we're in the School Health Insurance Fund, which what it does is it lowers the peaks and valleys. So instead of going to 23%, down to 2%, we stay anywhere between 4% to 11%. 11% this year being the highest we've ever seen. But many school districts who are in the state fund exceeded 20%. And so the states addressed that this year. All right, anyway. And you can see that federal funding has dropped. By the way, this is another interesting thing that no one talks about in New Jersey. There is a lot going on between NJ DOE and the US DOE. The NJ DOE is a part of a consortium of states that assuming the US DOE or the US government to state that they can't take away grant funding. And that's listed here, Special Revenue Grants, IDEA, USSA. That serves no more graphical purpose. And because there's some concern that the federal government is going to reduce funding. And so New Jersey has told the school districts not to sign a document that the US DOE has sent me and said, "You will sign this." And NJ DOE says, "You won't sign that." So somebody from the US DOE says, "Well, where is that?" And I said, "Look, here's the deal. I work for the NJ DOE, not the US DOE, and I know something to say." "Well, how could you do that? Aren't you patriotic?" "It's not about politics. I do what, I'm under the authority of the NJ DOE, so if it's not signed, he submitted." We'll jump off that bridge when we get there. All right. So our total increase of our overall budget of $24.9 million is $383,000, or 1.53%. Okay, here's the revenues. This is where we're getting the money from. Tax levy, general fund, as you can see, is going up 3.23%. And someone could say, "I thought there was a 2% cap. What are you doing? You trying to slip one past us? We are not using something called bank cap." This year, the state of New Jersey, because their insurance costs have exceeded 20%, there is special dispensation for a one-time-only maximum adjustment for healthcare costs this year of $219,000, which we are utilizing. So it's not bank cap. Now, for those of you who say, "Yes, but that's 3.23%. You're really not being fair, or else you should have cut." I endeavor, it is my belief that 3.23% is exceedingly frugal and there are likely most of the districts in the county going far exceed 3.2. I don't know that definitively. I didn't know where Shador Sanders was going to get drafted the other night. And I don't know where they're going to come in on 3.23%. But I do believe it will exceed 3.23% because this county has suffered for so long and they need to recoup some of the money that they have to pay back, particularly places like PacCom, which I don't know how they haven't even boarded up the windows yet, which they may be doing as we speak, I'm not quite sure. All right. Here's something that we don't talk about enough that has helped us immeasurably, tuition of Montague. Now, this may have taken fifteen years off of my life, I'm not quite sure yet. Nevertheless, the very fact that we still have these kids coming here has enabled us to bring in revenue that we otherwise would not have realized. And that $1.3 million anticipated and budgeted for fiscal '26 is a lifesaver. And we can see the number of students we're getting for Montague is increasing year over year. So that's a big positive. All right, budget and fund balance. What does that mean? I've talked about this in the past. One of the reasons why we've been able to manage these cuts is we are exceedingly frugal during the school year so as to end the year with something called a surplus. So when we want to buy more wood, or we don't want to use wood all the time, when we want to do certain expenditures, and I say to the administrators, and they store in my office with pitchforks and torches, I have to end up with something called budgeted fund balance so that I can fund the next budget so that we're not going to bank cap. All right. School choice increased a little bit. We're seeing reductions in multiple areas. You're going to say, "But Scott, why are you state aid dropping $108,000? It's very complicated because it's, I thought it was only dropping $44,000. What are you talking about?" There are multiple areas in which it's dropping. This area of $108,000 is inclusive of all the areas in which state aid is dropping. Equalization aid, I think, is the one that's dropping the forty, you know, it's dropping the most, as a matter of fact, of $44,000, which is the overall inclusive of all those numbers. All right. So what am I saying here? The overall budget going up 1.353. The tax levy going up 3.23%. All right. Here's a list. This is what I try to give context every year, what we have done in the past, so that everyone understands that state aid, we've dropped by almost $2.8 million over the last 12 years, a reduction of 53%. An average each year loss of state aid of $231,000. And I know I'm reading it. Cardinal sin of all PowerPoints. The person reads. Anyway, so the average for change is 4.43%. The average increase for us, in spite of that 4.43% each year reduced in state aid, the tax levy that we've averaged over 12 years is 1.35%, demonstrating, I believe, some semblance of responsibility by the High Point Board of Ed. And the total general fund, which means what we spend each year, has increased each year 0.85%. Obviously, you can see that. So what did I include on the bottom here? Not included in this chart is the tuition fees that are up to tech, which have amounted to $3.3 million over the last 12 years. Inclusive of the state aid cuts of $2.78 million, High Point has had to find, when they otherwise would not have had to in the halcyon days of years gone by, $6.1 million we've had to find. And yet, the general fund has only increased 1.9. So effectively, what we've done, $4.2 million we've had to find. $4.2 million in cuts we've had to find to be able to maintain the excellence that we endeavor to provide to our students and our community at High Point. All during that time, we have renovated both gyms. We have put in new boilers. We have put in new lockers. We have put in storage space. We've put in seating for senior lunches. We have put in HVAC, brand-new massive HVAC units on the roof. We've put in HVAC units in the upstairs, the second floor. There are other things that escape me, John. What am I missing?
That's a good one.
All right, so we have maintained the facility as good stewards of the facility in spite of having to find $4.2 million along the way. And when we went out to refer it for that $4.2... We've never gone out to refer it for that $4.2 million. We use it as budgeted fund balance so as to put it in responsibly, fund in capital and maintenance reserve all along so that we can use state grants, federal grants, to be able to maintain the facilities. The only thing that I feel badly about is we have not turfed the fields and we're not going to. Go to Lempick. Where is that coming from? Are you kidding me? It's all turfed. It's gorgeous. I don't know where it happened. I don't know what happened. Or go to Mount Olive, even better. They got like a dome there. Yikes. All right. Here's the tax levy history over that same period of time, as about which I spoke, demonstrating again, the earlier years when we were dropping student enrollment. We are demonstrating fiscal responsibility, trying to demonstrate to the community. We're trying to drop, and then what happens? State aid cuts. Yikes. But still, we've done our bests. Again, this is the average per year, which, if you amortize that out, is significant savings than if you had just gotten 2% each year. I know I'm rambling on, and you're losing interest as I speak. All right, now you're thinking, "Well, what does that have to do with my taxes?" Municipalities' estimated valuations. You see that Branchville apparently did not have any evaluation this year. And so the corporate township evaluations of property are listed there. Wantage went up $5 million, you can see this, you can see there. Why do I put this up there? Because it has to do with how much money you're paying if you own a house in one of these townships. What does the funding factor, what goes into how much taxes you pay? It has to do with the total valuation of the community in which you live. It has to do with the number of students that come from your particular community. And it has to do with the tax levy drawn from the school. If there's any other variables, I don't know them, and no one's telling. All right. And this is how it will increase, that $576,000, which I said is the tax levy increase. This is the difference for each municipality, and that's just gibberish. What does it mean if you own a $200,000 house? If you live in Branchville, your evaluation didn't go up. I just showed you the evaluation. If Branchville didn't go up, it's stat. So why then would they have to be paying more than anyone? You want to tell me? More students.
Very good.
More kids coming from Branchville, so they gotta pay a bigger portion. As you can see, Sussex, obviously, their number of students is dropping. Why is Montague on there? Because they are a second district. They are not a municipality in the original charter. Therefore, they do not pay taxes to us. They pay tuition fees to us. Do you think we're not working for them? So I said, "Any questions?"
So you see that the state funding has been cut 33%. What has been the percentage drop in population over those 12 years?
That's an excellent question. We were approximately 1,250 at the time. We're approximately 800-ish. So I would suggest we, what's that, 4, what's 33%?
So that state cut has exceeded our drop in student population?
Anything else?
Diane, also, not only the state aid cuts for equalization, the transportation and special ed have stayed flat, even though the expenses for those had increased over seven years. Or eight years of the state.
Yeah. It's, look, it's sometimes a show game. You're trying to manage diminishing resources and provide a world-class life experience to kids. But you're also trying to manage that within the context of what the community can bear. And that's a challenge. You have to balance that. What can the community provide to be able to provide that world-class education? And that really is balancing act that we take very, very seriously. And I think the numbers demonstrate that. Listen, I greatly appreciate your patience and your listening. It's amazing, please, someone engage, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Again, numbers are not always, or at least for people like me who are humanity-based, the most scintillating thing. Behind those numbers is a story. There's a story. Hopefully, I blow up that story out, so I'll be grateful. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rick.
Mr. Lewanski arrived just in time. We're going to turn to you, Speaker of the House, to give us an update on activities in student council.
Thank you. I'm going to have to do this on my phone.
That's all right. Understood.
Just give me one second.
Sure.
So to begin, obviously, good evening. I'm sorry for my later, my, I just had a track meet. We want to get on with the actual thing here. For our larger student council, our big council, we did a rock candy activity on April 16th, Wednesday. And we also did a spirit week before the spring break. So we had the Jawa Day on the Monday, the end of the week. And then we had a furback Tuesday. So you were, the idea was to wear clothes. That was from the past. For Wednesday, it was a wear pink day. It was in reference to Yule Eve girls. For Thursday, we had Hawaiian Day, which we provided a large sum of Hawaiian leis, the symbolic. It was 600 leis that were passed out to the front of the school as students were coming up. And we also had, on Tuesday, a Easter egg hunt in the courtyard, backyard. There were over 200 eggs hidden on the courtyard grounds. And there were prizes for certain special eggs, like a golden egg or a football egg. There was a, yeah, like I said, a golden egg, which contained a $10 gift card to Wawa. There was a prize for the largest number of eggs gathered. There were a, each student that found a special egg received a chocolate Easter bone. And there were 11 eggs, which an X on the bottom of it, which provided a large box of candy as a prize. We also had a Class of 2025 swag table set up there too, with some candy and little senior Class of 2025, I don't remember whether they're there. Yeah, like little cups or keychains. We also have Teacher Appreciation Week, treats coming up on the 7th of May. And for our formal events, we have, for the Class of 2025, we have the Senior Dinner Groups on May 23rd. And we have payment for senior yard signs too on the 2nd. And for the Class of 2026, we have the Junior Prom on May 22nd. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't feel obligated to say. Thank you. Next, we have the principal's report. John Howley.
Good evening, everybody. Kyle, great job.
Thank you.
Always a good old. All right. Thank you, everybody, good evening again. Just like to give some updates on some of the events that we have going on. So next, we have coming up, Kyle covered a lot of them. Don't be caught, so the Class of 2025 is sponsored, student council sponsors a celebration of Class of 2025 each day on the 25th. Obviously, the 25th is our spring break, so before spring break, the day that we talked about was seniors owning our senior courtyard. It's amazing what Easter egg hunts will do. We had about 100 seniors out there lined up, ready to go. Ready to go, the rules about no pushing, no shoving, no tackling. That's what we're talking about. So each month, we're trying to celebrate the Class of 2025 in a different way. And that was the activity by the sponsor of the student council. Tomorrow evening, we have our Honor Society induction ceremony, which is a combined ceremony that we've been working towards for many years. And the reason we've done that with all of our Honor Societies, and I'll read through some of the list here, is parents have a lot of nights out. Kids have a lot of nights out by, this is what Kyle was talking about. So we used to have about six to eight different award ceremonies with Honor Societies. And we slowly tried, over the course of time, get them to be into one night. So parents come for one evening, it takes some time to stream on everything, but it does make it a little nicer for our parents and students to be able to attend that. Otherwise, April, May, it's, you know, six or so activities because many of them are in multiple Honor Societies. So tomorrow night, we'll have about 100 students have been recognized through our Honor Societies, the NHS, the National Honor Society is the global umbrella Honor Society, right? And then there's multiple ones underneath them. So Mr. Minor is our NHS advisor. Mrs. Emma and Mr. Lou is our business NHS advisor. Mrs. Carol Matthews is our foreign language NHS advisor. Mr. Baker is our science NHS advisor. Like I said, there's multiple ones. Mr. Slaney is our music NHS advisor. Ms. Jacarino, Mrs. Riecarre, our math NHS advisors. Ms. Loyal and Mr. DeCarlo are our social studies NHS advisors. And Mr. Nice is our art and Dr. Zorba is psychology. So over the course of time, those organizations have worked with volunteer advisors to develop their chapters and honor students for areas that they are, you know, really, really passionate about. Many, like I said, are in multiple areas and not just one. So we're going to honor them tomorrow night at 7:00 in the auditorium. Additionally, we have, the master schedule is continue to run and continue to work as we get ready for next year's schedule. I believe that we come back to spring break. And we're in May, my big day exams, a lot of things that happen very quickly. I say to those that are not in education, September, October, and May, and June are the bookends. Right, the chapters get read in the beginning and the middle. But really, those two bookends are really important for the opening and the end. Uh, but really, those two bookends are really important for the opening and the closing of the school year and returning of those chapters. Uh, we also have our eighth grade picnic, which is another transition program coming up. Uh, that's steadily set for June third. I'm actually meeting with the senior principals tomorrow to confirm that date because we work with all of their calendars, so we set a date. But things come up, um, as we look at those regions and those districts that are coming in and we will try to work what's best for that. That is really a nice transitional step. We have our eighth grade tours in the fall, the eighth grade open house, we've spoken about it in, in January. This is really more of a, uh, an open icebreaker activity, get to know students, get to know mentors, hear high point, familiar faces, see the clubs and activities. Uh, and that way when they come in, um, in September for the, uh, ninth grade orientation, uh, there's a ninth graders now. Uh, that's kind of like the final step of their journey and transition, and then multiple steps, obviously, during the ninth grade year. Um, our senior scholarships dinner is the twenty-first, like I said, May is busy at six o'clock. Um, that's always a fantastic night, it's at the Red Cell Lodge. Uh, we have probably over three hundred guests there, um, or so, and it is a, a really fantastic night. I don't have the final numbers yet of what, uh, the amount of, um, scholarships that will be given by our community members. But it's, uh, every year pushing more and more, um, donations from them, so we're very grateful and appreciative of that. Uh, as Kyle was speaking about, we saw the junior prom the next night, on May twenty-second. That's, uh, Villa Valenza, which is a place that ran last year as well. Uh, that's in, uh, Goacham Middletown, um, across the way. It's been very, very difficult to find junior prom areas. Um, one of the challenges that we have is anytime over a certain number, a hundred fifty is about the number. Um, it's very difficult to find them. Most places now, especially post-COVID, do not want to do proms, uh, except for a Tuesday or Wednesday night. That's difficult. Thursday's hard enough as it is, um, because they need weddings, right? So weddings obviously are more advantageous for them, so more and more difficult. Um, next year, it's going to be down at Mountain Lakes, a new establishment that, um, we found down there. So, uh, our dinner cruise is the next evening, if you're looking for anything, that's a busy week. Uh, and we're going, we're cruising around in the hawk and, and enjoying that. Again, one of the best activities for our seniors, looking forward to that. We have a large number of seniors signed up for that, with that wrapping up for signups pretty soon. And a couple of key, um, student accomplishments that I'd like to speak about briefly is, uh, we were able to announce our valedictorian. Um, Ashton Ritson is our valedictorian. We like to, um, have them come in once it's finalized at the end of the last marketing period, um, and have them call their parents. And it's a pretty cool thing to counsel and surprise them. Uh, the parents say, why, you should call me because they don't have speakerphone, um, and they get the good excited news. Um, and the valedictorian is Gabe Reinstein. Um, so we're very proud of them and all their accomplishments. It's not always about, um, the recognition, but when he works so hard for something like that, I think it really is important that they are recognized and elevated. In addition, um, we had another student that, uh, I think this is the first time ever, um, in a eight-day span, he received his Eagle Scout, um, in a court of honor that I went to over in Sanderson, which was really, really nice. Um, and then the following Friday, Dr. Blin, I got to sit with him and his family for the superintendent roundtable over. Um, so Alex Wackowski, um, received both of those things, and I believe in my time, um, and since a lot of Eagle Scouts, it's the only time it does ever happen for a student. So, um, I said, Alex, what are we doing next week? What's going on because we're, we're so busy? Um, humble, um, student, he has decided, Dr. Blin, I know he's in, to Virginia Tech, this is his final choice, um, for some high-level engineering, like NASA-related stuff, nobody really understands. Um, he tried to explain to me, I said, Alex, I don't hear what you're talking about. Let's be honest, right? Uh, so that's a cool thing. We also have some students that were, um, recognized just as of today for, um, All-State choir. So All-State mixed choir, uh, Brili Calaruso, Grace McAvoy, and Charles Neko, uh, were recognized for All-State mixed choir. All-State trouble choir, um, Gabrielle D. and Leah Climas. Um, also additionally, Charles Neko, who is in the All-State mix, um, received the eighth ranking in the entire state in base one. So that is a first procedures, that's, uh, more like if you look at athletics for All-State, right? Um, that's higher level than that, right? To beat in the top eight, I'm asking, so, uh, Brili, Grace, and Charles are going to perform in Atlantic City at NJPAC in November. And also Leah Gav will perform in Atlantic City at NJPAC in February. So, um, there's really cool things to them to come, those are all our classmates, uh, looking forward to next year. And then last but certainly not least, our Bring Change to Mine, which is a, again, a volunteer club that was started by two of our counselors, uh, Mrs. Pada and Mrs. Pimicario. Uh, with students about mental health and raising awareness of mental health. Uh, they're sponsoring activities May twelfth through sixteenth, very fitting time, still at the tail end of AP exams. A lot of extra stress happens for our students, um, for us as adults as well. We talk about AP, we talk about college, we talk about career, all those things that start to really come to fruition. Um, so they're going to be sponsoring wellness and mental, uh, awareness activities during lunch, during that time period. Uh, if it's okay, Mr. Pada, switch over to athletics. Uh, some of these things I did think maybe I spoke about, just want to make sure that if I did that, I do that again. Uh, Dylan Masters was selected as a national football foundation scholar athlete. We honored him back in March, um, which is a, a really cool thing, uh, to, to see that was down on Moorestown. Uh, High Point is going to host the following, um, charity events in the spring. Spring season is only a month from completing already, it's crazy, but it is. Uh, baseball softball is going to do the second annual Doc Ayers Classic on May eighteenth, looking for a fun time. Uh, that's, uh, here at, right at the school on, on the field, and they do a lot of great job with that. And Girls Across will be, uh, having to play pink game on Mar, uh, excuse me, May twelfth at six-thirty, um, and that's against Urbana, I think. So again, a nice way to bring awareness, not about the, um, dollar signs that they collect, it's about bringing awareness to individuals or for, um, group efforts. In addition, uh, Danny Mustelli was selected as an NJSLA, there's two different ones, right? Uh, scholar athlete, and Danny's going to be recognized at the Pine Barrens, uh, Tom Pine Barrens down, um, on May nineteenth. So we're looking at, uh, forward to that. You have the NJSLA scholar athlete, right, and you have Sussex County basketball scholar athlete, they're two different things. Um, and there are two different, um, recognitions for us. Ashton Ritson, who spoke about before, is a valedictorian, was our scholar athlete, recognized serve in March as well at Lake Moab. Um, and last but certainly not least, we had additional, you think wrestling's over? Wrestling's never over, especially at High Point, there's a, a little bit of tradition here of wrestling, I'd like to know that. Uh, but we've spoken, uh, a lot about a couple of different female particular wrestlers that have had tremendous career already. Um, Ella Palillo is, um, sophomore here at High Point, Ella Shangreese, Ella Shangreese is a, is a freshman. Uh, both of them were state champs, um, this year for girls. Um, Ella, this is her second time, she's going for four, she told me, so, hold it to it. Uh, I don't think she's going to have a hard time getting there. But they also had a chance to, um, compete recently in the world, the team, uh, so it's U seventeen, U seventeen team, um, they're out west, they competed in that. Um, Ella was a champion, um, and Ella received the third-place final on that, so, uh, that's no joke. And we're talking about that level of competition, we, we don't talk about athletes, um, at that level of competition very often. Um, here at High Point, but it's just in general, we don't have the opportunity to talk about two individuals, um, that have succeeded that much. So they're going to have the opportunity to go on to Athens, Greece and compete, um, at the next level of worlds, uh, which is a phenomenal experience for a freshman and sophomore. So just, uh, again, want to recognize them and all that they do. I think that's all the information that I have for this evening. Any questions?
Thank you very much. And, uh, next is our curriculum instruction by Mr. James.
Good evening, folks. Uh, we had a fantastic day, I believe, today. Uh, the New Jersey Department of Ed was here on a CUSAC visit. And most people don't express joy, uh, when they get voted in for CUSAC. But to be honest with you, it was just a fantastic opportunity for our leadership team and some of our staff to, um, present, uh, the fantastic things that we're doing. We're so proud of, um, our efforts to, um, increase and sustain student excellence, and that was really demonstrated today. I think the, uh, county office of the DOE was, uh, overwhelmed by the, um, uh, some of the, the measures we've taken to try and improve. Now, we were put on an improvement plan, as I think every, uh, district in the county was. And our improvement plan required us to focus on four things. ELA test scores, math test scores, graduation rate, and chronic absenteeism. In all four areas, we have already, uh, proven significant improvement. So to have a media review, and the numbers are already in, and we're making, uh, very considerable progress in those areas, it's very affirming to, to our efforts. Um, we will have to extend our improvement plan, and that will be on next month's agenda. We'll talk more about that then. It was, um, not a chance to, uh, it was really just a chance to talk about best practices. And have, um, a half-day collaboration with, with them and for our team to show what we're doing. So, um, it was an outstanding day. Um, much of the data used to prove that we've grown comes from our annual performance report. And as of last week, the annual academic performance report for every school and every district in New Jersey is publicly accessible. Now, uh, we will present ours in detail at next month's meeting, um, and we can show you where much of that growth that I just referenced, um, is, it can be documented. So we look forward to that. Um, a lot of it is testing, a lot of it is, is, uh, data from assessments. And as Mr. Callum mentioned, May is a time for assessments. Um, a week from, well, actually, this coming Monday and the following week, we will administer AP exams to, um, for twenty-one subjects. We will administer more than three-hundred-and-fifty assessments, um, and it's a very rigorous and important two-week period. Then at the end of the month, we will administer the NJSLA in math, English, and science to freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. So, um, we've got a lot of assessments, we've got a lot of data, and we've got a lot of indicators of, um, improvement and sustained excellence. Um, and we will talk, um, considerably more next month, um, about some of those data points. Um, any questions on any of that? Right, just one other quick thing, um, all shook up was two weeks ago, um, and it was unbelievable. So, uh, we are very proud of our, uh, our programs and performing arts, um, is right at the top of the list of, of great things that we do here, um, at High Point. So, um, see many of you shaking your heads, you have a chance to see it, it was a really great experience. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, return to our agenda, we have no other business, so let's move to action items, curriculum instruction, and technology.
Items one through three are faculty attendance for March, student attendance for March, and suspension report for March with attachments. I'm going to move items four through twelve together. Item four is the harassment intimidation and bullying report from March eighteenth through April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Number five are the field trips. Uh, number six, professional development activities. Number seven, uh, the graduation date for the class of twenty-twenty-five, which will be Wednesday, June eighteenth at six PM. Uh, number eight is the revised twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar, uh, reflecting a half-day schedule, um, as listed on this, um, agenda. Uh, number nine is the approval for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar. Uh, number ten are volunteers to attend the whale watch trip to Cape Cod. Um, necessary background checks have been completed for most, there's ones pending. Uh, number eleven, it, um, is the approval and, uh, the updated local ed, education agency guidance for virtual remote instruction plan. Um, and it, there's an attachment for that. And number twelve is the voter registration law annual statement of assurance with an attachment. So making a motion, taking a second.
Second.
And any discussion?
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Palazza?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay, personnel, um, Mrs. Orsi is not with us tonight, so I'll move items, uh, there are personnel, I'll move item one separate. Uh, one is a recommendation by superintendent to accept with regret retirement notification, uh, from Stephen McGrath, supervisor of buildings and grounds, effective July first, twenty-twenty-five. I'll make that motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
Just wish, uh, Mr. McGrath well. We appreciate his time here and, uh, just say congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. McGrath. Uh, what comments?
Uh, Ms. Palazza?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. And, uh, item two, I'll move alone, is a recommendation by superintendent that the board accepts with regret retirement notification from Carla Mancuso, who's special education teacher, also effective July first, twenty-twenty-five. I'll make that motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Congratulations, uh, from, uh, from the district and the board of Ed, and, uh, we wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors.
I echo that.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Palazza?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Uh, I will move remaining items seven through eight together. Three is a recommendation to approve the following individuals as substitutes for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year pending required paperwork as listed. Item four is a recommendation to approve the certificated and non-certificated staff members for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six year as listed in the attachments, uh, as shown. And item five is a recommendation to approve Denise Nicholas as a full-time paraprofessional aide for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year as listed. Uh, item six is a recommendation to approve John Kennechi, substitute teacher, to supervise after-school detention, as listed. Item seven is a recommendation to approve an NJMLA, FLA maternity childcare leave of absence for employee one-two-seven-seven, as listed. And item eight is a recommendation to approve Nancy White as a home constructor for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Uh, I will make that motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on any of those?
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Palazza?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Uh, I guess I need to do extracurriculars, so I'll, I'll move item one through three together. Uh, one is a recommendation to accept the resignation, resignation notification, uh, from Aaron Baker as volleyball coach, effective immediately. Item two is a resignation, uh, recommendation to accept the resignation notification from Kelly Reynolds as field, head field hockey coach, effective immediately. And item three is a recommendation to accept the resignation notification from James Teslanian as the head marching band advisor, effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. So I'll make that motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion or comments?
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Palazza?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. I'll move the remaining three items, four through six. It is a recommendation to approve the boys' soccer team to attend the Gettysburg team camp at Gettysburg College, as listed. Uh, there will be no cost to the board as they were responsible for their own transportation. Item five is a recommendation to approve, uh, July third and August seventh of, uh, twenty-twenty-five as dates for physicals to be performed by the school doctor for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six sport season. Uh, item six is a recommendation to approve an overnight trip for the competing members of the boys and girls track team to attend the NJSLA group two finals. Be held, uh, May thirtieth and thirty-first at Del C High School. Uh, if, if individuals qualify and make it to finals across the hotel rooms will be at the following rates as listed. So, I'll make that motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? None?
Ms. Palazza?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Uh, moving along, no policy items, no negotiations items, action items, and no buildings and grounds action items, so finance. I would like to move items one through five, uh, in a block. Uh, one is a recommendation to accept the report of the board secretary, business administrator for March twenty-twenty-five. Item two is a recommendation to accept the report of the treasurer for March twenty-twenty-five. Item three is a recommendation to approve the report, transfers and minimum expense transfer report for March twenty-twenty-five. Item four is a recommendation to approve the payment of attached schedule of ordered bills dated April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Item five is a recommendation to accept the adult education agency account, athletic account, cafeteria account, construction account, schools petty, uh, principal pending cash account, scholarship account, school store, and student activities reconciliations for March twenty-twenty-five. So I make that motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Discussion?
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Palazza?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay, item six, it relates to our proposed budget, um, resolution. Be resolved at the board approves the adoption of the proposed school budget for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty school year as follows. And that entire section on that page is related to travel and related expense reimbursement. Um, I will skip that and read the resolution portion. Be resolved at the budget for the approved, approved for the, be approved for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Using the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six state aid figures and the secretary to the High Point Regional High School Board of Education be authorized to submit be authorized to submit the following budget to the executive county superintendent of schools. And that table is exactly as was presented earlier by Dr. Ripley. So I won't read that. Be resolved at the High Point Regional High School Board of Education approves the levy of general fund taxes for the 2025-2026 school budget to be $18,427,865. This budget addresses health and safety issues related to facility, capital spending, student-centered items, and program integrity. And to advertise said budget, tentative budget in the New Jersey Herald and Decorant with a form suggested by the State Department of Education and according to law. I will make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? Are you making a, is that fine? We've been there? We also posted, we're posting it too.
Yeah, it will be posted, posted on our website as well.
We can leave the motion out, it's fine. We'll take a vote.
Okay. Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Palset?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
And I will remove, I'll move the remaining, well, let's move seven and eight together. Seven is a recommendation, grant permission to the High Point Loops Camp to host a non-affiliated co-ed camp, grade three through nine, which will run July 7th through July 10th. And item eight is a recommendation to grant permission to the HP Tennis Camp to host a non-affiliated co-ed camp, grade three through nine, which will run July 14th through July 16th as listed. I'll make that motion, may I have a second? Any comments or discussion on that?
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Palset?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Item nine is a very extensive resolution that Dr. Ripley does not want me to read with ease. It is a recommendation that the board approves the following resolution. This relates to the leasing of a bus for the High Point Regional High School District. And the principal amount to be expected to finance is $152,699.40. Basically, we are, it's a lease-to-purchase agreement, okay? And it is as, as explained here. So I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on our new bus lease? This is exactly as we have done in the past, board.
We've done both. We've purchased them outright and also leased purchased them.
And we were in need of a new bus.
We are consistently in need of new buses. Given as I had stated earlier, the size of our setting district, that we have to have a constant eye on rotation of our bus fleet so as to be sure that we're constantly replacing those that exceed 150, 200,000 miles that they put on in only a few years. Plus, it takes 18 months lead time to vote on this resolution and then to ultimately take possession of the vehicle.
Wow, so we'll see this bus in 2027. Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Palset?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
And final item in finance, another resolution be resolved at High Point Regional upon the recommendation to superintendent, consultation with interim school business administrator, approves the FSMC renewal with Maschio's Service Management Company for the 2025-2026 school year for a flat fee of $26,650. And further as listed there under that item. So I will make that motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? I believe we were in the black this year.
Yes, not significantly, but much more so than we were previously. Over the last several years, we've been dipping closer and closer to break even into the red. Although we have acknowledged over the years that our purpose is not to make money on the backs of kids buying milk. Euphemistically speaking. It is however, we have a responsibility not to dip into red. So we made some adjustments that the, the black is, is more pronounced than in the past. But please don't misunderstand that it's not a significant amount of money. One of the things with which we deal is, and it's difficult because we have many students and careers of, you know, of lunch money. But we cannot deny students the opportunity and the ability and the privilege of eating. So we manage that as they cost them due business.
Very good. No other comments, roll call, please.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Palset?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
May I turn it over to Mr. Van Stone on transportation?
Sure, I'll be moving all nine together. Items one and two are joint transportation agreements. Three, four, and five are quoted contracts. Item six is the yearly bus evacuation drills as listed, all these things up here as listed. Seven is another joint transportation, coordinated transportation agreement as is eight and nine. I will be making motion, move all nine, could I have a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any comments on that? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Palset?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
I have to repeat myself, number five. Are we asking all of them?
Oh, no, no, you can.
Number five, yes, for us, okay.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, we have no correspondence under miscellaneous. I have a couple of items I just wanted to mention. Next Tuesday is the next Sussex County School Boards meeting. If anybody is interested in attending, there are both virtual and in-person options. We'll be honoring the Sussex County Teacher of the Year from Kidney Field High School. And there are a number of awards and presentations and other things that happen.
Mr. Dunn will also be recognized as will Ms. Orsi, so just in case you're inclined, there will hopefully be receiving recognition that he particularly due to Mr. Dunn for his long service.
That's not why I brought that up. Oh, yes, okay. Second other one, item I had was, I'm not sure of the date, the New Jersey School Boards delegate assembly.
The 10th?
The 10th. I think Ms. Palset is going to be attending that.
Yes.
For us, thank you.
Excited.[1699.33]